It's my pleasure to call to order the 12:00 PM City Council Meeting of May 15, 2017. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Next item, please.
Mayor Go just wanted to announce that the request of staff, Item 3A.2 Department Budget Presentation from Visit Bakersfield will be removed from tonight's agenda and rescheduled for the June 5 Budget Workshop.
Thank you.
Public Statements.
To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the Department Budget Workshop items only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements?
We have no public statements.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, Department Budget Presentation, the first one, General Government.
Mr. Huat.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Chris Huat, City Manager's Office. Today, I'm going to be presenting to you the General Government Budget for fiscal year 1718. Just to start off, what I'm going to be talking about today covers these different departments and divisions, the Mayor and the City Council Budget, City Manager's Office, City Clerk, Human Resources, Risk Management, and Technology Services. Starting off with the Mayor and the City Council's budget combined, we're showing about a 4% decrease from last year's adopted numbers. And the most significant change there is with the election and changeover in some of the council, there's been some elective medical and health coverage changes. So really, that is the bulk of why you're seeing the decrease. Everything else, from an operational standpoint, remains relatively the same. So there's not really any significant increases otherwise in the budget for either Mayor or City Council. In regards to the Executive Department, you can see here our organization chart. Generally have the five divisions and the two Assistant City Managers and the executive staff. I'll go into detail on each one of these divisions here in just a moment. A little bit about our accomplishments through the course of the current year in Human Resources. They've collaborated with Technology Services and the Finance Department to implement the new timekeeping system for payroll for the city. They've completed nearly 80 recruitments to date in support of all the various departments and divisions. City Clerk's Office has conducted a variety of different election-related activities this year, including the November 8 runoff election for the Mayor's Office, as well as the municipal election for Wards 2, 5, and 6. They've also implemented the same NOVA system that you're using for the council meetings at the Planning Commission. So we've gone pretty much paperless with the Planning Commission now, too, and that's been very popular. In Risk Management, partnered with the Human Resources Division to conduct a Health and Wellness Fair for city employees. That was done in November, featured approximately 50 local vendors, a very good turnout down at the Convention Center lobby. They've also continued advancing the city's safety and wellness program. Technology Services has been busy over the course of the last year. They rebranded their name to align with the services they're providing. Previously, they were Information Technology. After the merger with the Telecommunications Division, they've now become the Technology Services Division. They've continued to replace, excuse me, expensive and older technologies at our city fire stations with newer technology that carry a much lower cost and actually provide a much better level of service. So that is ongoing and pretty much complete. They've also worked and started to work with the Kern County Information Technology Services Department and a consulting firm hired by Kern County to look at a region-wide radio network upgrade. And this is a large project that is coming. We have some antiquated technologies that are being used and will no longer be supported at some point in the future. So this is a first step in identifying what that potential network and system would look like. The Manager's Office has been busy as well, continuing to oversee the implementation of the trip projects, have efforts related to high-speed rail and the State Groundwater Management Act. We also led two grant application efforts that resulted in the city being awarded $1.2 million to establish a bike-share program and about $311,000 for two generators at stormwater pump stations. Also coordinated efforts between the state and the city in regards to Senate Bill 88, which is a water consolidation bill. And our office continues to liaison and work with local school districts to ensure that the necessary public rideaway infrastructure is in place when those new facilities come online. Looking forward, our action plans, highlights for next year, Technology Services will continue to work with Kern County and other agencies in evaluating that radio system that I mentioned. We're also looking at working closer with the county for use of space and utilities to co-locate some technology systems that the city has to, again, provide some redundancy that is necessary for an organization of our size. On the Human Resources front, we'll continue to offer the Supervisor Level 1 training throughout the city and begin development of a Supervisor Level 2 training, and continue to identify improvements in the execution of interfaces, benefit, and payroll-related items by streamlining processes. All right. Risk Management. Risk Management will look to launch an online safety training resource site that'll be available to staff and will provide online safety courses and certifications for our employees. In the Manager's Office, we're going to, as we talked about during the budget kickoff presentation, going to continue to monitor in the state and federal budget for any legislative actions that may affect programs and services that are provided by the city. Going to continue to focus on the remaining two Thomas Roads Improvement Projects that will move soon into construction. And we will be continuing to work with the Local Agency Formation Commission or LAFCO on processing annexations. We have obviously a recent focus back on island annexations, which we are looking to process a few in the upcoming year. A little bit about the numbers. I've broken down the executive budget in two different ways. The first will show you the year-over-year changes by division. And the bottom table is showing you the year-over-year changes by the different sources of funds in which fund the division. And I'll get into a little bit of the detail on these changes here in just a moment, including that large percentage change that you may see on the Equipment Fund. Overall, showing about a 4.3% increase, a lot of that in the General Fund. And the 2% increase can be attributable to CalPERS rate adjustments. And let me... Yeah, CalPERS rate adjustments. And then you'll see some of those divisions, Human Resources, I believe, and one in particular where retirements have resulted in lower personnel costs. So as the new personnel comes in at a lower step, those pay decreases are reflected in the overall budgets for those different divisions. So that's why you'll see a couple of the divisions showing a decrease year-over-year. On the Equipment Fund, as you're probably aware, over the last year, many new technologies have come on board, which our Technology Services Department now supports. That includes the pavement management system, have some new software for streets, the Animal Care Center, ExecuTime, which is the payroll, Socrata, and the video management system. So that is one of the reasons why we're seeing a slight increase in the Equipment Fund. The second component of all that is equipment that we're buying and purchasing for the different departments, includes replacement of aged-out equipment. We have about 102 workstations and 100 MDCs that are proposed to be replaced for the Police Department. Out of those 102 workstations that are proposed to be replaced, those comprise over half of all the workstations scheduled to be replaced next year. 87 of the MDCs that are proposed for replacement were deferred from the current budget year. And then finally, in the Self-Insurance Fund, we've seen some small increases in our excess coverage premiums, and that's due to normal market fluctuations. So that's the reason why we're seeing a slight increase in that fund. Regarding staffing, this shows you our historical staff trends. I'll note in '15-'16, there's an asterisk there, that was the fiscal year in which the telecommunications staff merged with what was then the Information Technology Division. So you see a slight bump there. That was really no increase to the overall complement, just a restructuring of the different divisions. And so as of the current year, there was a reduction of two positions in the Executive Department due to budget implications. And then we're proposing no changes moving into next fiscal year. And as vacancies do occur throughout the department, we are reviewing those just to determine how we plan on moving forward, and we do that on a regular basis. So with that, that ends my brief presentation for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I also have staff here from each of the divisions who are available for questions as well. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next, we have the Budget Presentation from Financial... Oh, I apologize. AEG, Rabobank, Arena Theater, and Convention Center.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tandy, I'm Steve Ekerson. I'm the General Manager of the arena. It's a pleasure to be here. Ed Dorsey, all of you know, he's been here forever. Well, not quite forever, but forever. And Kerry Willer, who's our Director of Finance. So they can answer any questions. We'll run through this pretty quick. It's all, I think, great news. Stop me, or we can answer questions at the end. The first slide, of course, is the front with the beautiful fountain, certainly one of the more aesthetic entrances of any arena in the country. It's spectacular. We had 87 events in the arena with over half a million people attending, another 87 in the Theater and Convention Center, 10 events out at the Amphitheater with over 17,000. Over 25,000 skaters came to the Ice Center, and overall attendance at all our venues, over 15%. So a very good year. Some of the highlights. We had capacity crowds for Kerry Underwood and Blake Shelton, George Lopez and D.L. Hughley, which was New Year's Eve in the theater. Our monster truck show grows every year. We had two nights of almost sellouts. And then, of course, we got all excited a couple of times about Elton John. He was sold out, beyond sold out, and unfortunately canceled due to illness. We hope at some point he will return. We're working on that. And then if you were watching Saturday or the media, we had the USA versus Mexico in an international arena soccer match. Arena soccer is gaining popularity around the country, and we had over 4,000. And an unbelievable atmosphere with the crowds cheering each other. The game was 7-6, went right down to the end. Very, very exciting night. To the best of my knowledge, we've had one other arena soccer match, and that was probably 17 or 18 years ago. So this is very exciting. You all are aware of the growth of soccer in the United States, and arena soccer in particular is gaining in popularity. So we were very excited about this. The Amphitheater, it has a new name. I'm sure you all know. It's now Spectrum, as Charter Communications has purchased Bright House. We had Kenny Rogers, UB40, The Beach Boys, Saturday Night Abba the Concert. And here before July 1, we have Fab Four and Britt Floyd, two other tribute bands. Fab Four, obviously, The Beatles. And they are, have been acknowledged as the number-one tribute band in the country. So we're very excited about that. That's in three weeks. The Ice Center continues to grow. Youth hockey continues to grow. This past year, the Bakersfield Skating Academy was created to increase learn-to-skate and figure skating, and we've had some great success with that. We had an event at the arena to highlight figure skating. They did a Christmas presentation, and we expect that to come back. It was kind of a cool event. Another great venue for the city. I've been here nine months, and I continue to be impressed with all the great venues we have here. Again, some of the highlights, Blake Shelton, Lady Antebellum, which is a week from Friday, selling very well. The last-ever Ringling Brothers Circus, as the circus no longer exists. Disneyland Ice was here. Again, we mentioned USA Mexico. Very soon is Boston. So again, moving through very quickly. The CIF State Wrestling Championships, a great event. Every year, when I was, to be honest with you, when I was in Ontario, I tried to steal that event from Bakersfield, and they are so happy here that I was unable to. So... And then I'm not going to read through all these highlights of the Theater and the Convention Center. I did go online, and there's an amazing history of the theater. I'm sure you, many of you may not know that the Doors were here. You see Alice Cooper, who's coming in a couple of weeks. He was last here in 1975. Just an amazing history of that venue. Touching again on the Amphitheater, the 4th of July Celebration, which, of course, will be back. We had Kenny Rogers. The Gospel Fest has become an annual event. Most recently, we had the Radio Laser Festival, Hispanic Radio Abba, which was just the other night. And again, I've already talked about Fab Four and Britt Floyd. The Arena, the annual Guns and Hoses Charity Boxing Event. I guess that's where the police and fire get together, so to speak. All right? And I see some nods back there. Very excited about this Gloria Trevi Alejandra Guzmán show. They sold out two nights in Staples Center, and so we will get a show in September. Tim and Faith, big names. And again, I'm not going to read down this list, but, and we're working on a lot of other exciting things for the upcoming year. This is a brief highlight of our capital improvement requests. And the ice plant, which is 20 years old, is running its course. The video wall, this will be kind of a... The parts are no longer available for the screen, so we hope to upgrade that for something larger and sexier. HVAC controller upgrades, that's really, how do you get excited about that? And of course, it's time to replace one of the Zambonis. Does everyone know that the Zamboni was invented and built in California? There's some trivia for you. Our tenants, Bakersfield Condors, second year in the American Hockey League, missed making the playoffs by one game, unfortunately. Attendance was slightly down. Of course, they'll be back. If you follow hockey, you know the parent club, Edmonton Oilers, lost in seven games to the Anaheim Ducks in the second round. First time they've been in the playoffs since, I think, 2006. And that bodes well for the Condors. As the big team gets better, their minor-league team will get better as well. So you can write it down. They will make the playoffs next year. Am I right, Alan? Yeah, okay. Jam Theatricals, this is the 12th season for the Broadway series in Bakersfield. This upcoming year, we will actually have two additional shows, which are listed there. And of course, the Symphony returns, and we're talking to them about a couple additional potential events involving the Symphony. Again, a great venue and great events for the city. AEG, it's very important that we all be involved in the community. A couple of events that we did this year is a Job Shadow Day. Also, we invited the Boys and Girls Club for a tour. We also try to, where possible, give tickets to charities for donations, fundraising, those types of things. Couple of new sponsors. One, Stadium Park, this is where you get an app. And then, rather than pay as you drive into the lot, you can already be prepaid and immediately pass through and park. And then we've added Three Way Chevrolet and the outlets this past year. Sustainability and Conservation, very, very important to AEG. And Mr. Anshut especially takes great interest in this. Here's some of the facts that we've been able to accomplish. All the water that we've saved, some great recycling programs. We're also, in the upcoming year, looking into a battery backup system. And what this does is it allows you to limit your demand, which is now probably even more important than the saving of kilowatt-hours. And then we just want to touch on the upcoming 4th of July Celebration. PG&E has made a significant commitment to the funding of this with $15,000. Just the other day, Rabobank stepped up, but we are still looking for $35,000 in additional donations and sponsorships so that, to fund this great, great event. We'll be passing the hat here momentarily. In our budget, we expect that expenses will exceed income by the $415,000, which is by contract what the city guarantees. And that is the presentation. Any questions?
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. On the net income loss, so that's the actual loss is the city amount, or you're still not making any money over there?
That is correct. Now, that's the amount that the city is, by contract, will contribute.
I thought it was a maximum.
AEG, when we bid the management contract for our facilities, gave the city a maximum cost guarantee and took at risk monies above the guarantee. So the actual numbers will reflect something higher, which they are paying separately. And the maximum our expenses can be is the $415,000.
What we both hope is that you'll make money and our number will go down.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, I wasn't quite clear on your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
And one other question was the soccer. Is that any more of those coming, or that does seem like something that there's a real future in?
There is interest in a franchise coming to Bakersfield. We're in discussions whether it would be the upcoming... The arena soccer kind of mirrors hockey. And it's a shorter season, but it starts November 1, and playoffs are in March. So there's that overlap. There's discussions about potentially it coming this November. If not, it would be next year. There's a lot of interest based on the success of Saturday Night's game, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you.
Oh.
Steve.
Yes.
Thank you. You and your team are doing such a great job. You mentioned events for the city. Well, I'm telling you, we are all benefiting and appreciate just the variety that you're bringing. We were at Abba last Saturday, saw quite a few of the staff there. It was just an amazing venue. And of course, we love the new Spectrum. Now, what is the correct term?
You were right, Spectrum Amphitheater.
Amphitheater, okay, very good. Well, and of course...
The park is beautiful, the amphitheater is beautiful. You're right, it's great.
You know, those sprawling hills and just the way it was designed originally, you know, just wonderful for, basically forever for our city. But I remember back so well when Blake Shelton was there, just to see, you know, just the thrill of seeing a overflow crowd, you know, every age, every attire, but everybody was there to support, you know. The entertainment that comes to Bakersfield, they very quickly realized that we are a wonderful audience, an appreciated audience. And so anyway, you're...
Saturday was interesting to see the people drag their little kids to see, help them relive their past.
Yes, very, very true. And the ones that were...
And grandkids, too, actually.
Yes. And the ones that were saying word by word from memory, you know, the ages that were able to do that. But anyway, just one more, one more great evening.
They looked the part, too, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah. We were having a good time. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Continue the good work.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Financial Services.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Nelson Smith, Finance Director. It's my pleasure to present to you the proposed budget for the Finance Department for the fiscal year 1718. This is our organizational chart. Finance is made up of four divisions. We have Treasury, Accounting, Purchasing, and Property Management, which serve all of the city departments as a central processing area and as well as the citizens of Bakersfield. Our Finance Department has 32 employees. We had up to 35 back in 2008, but for the last several years, we've held steady at 32. This is the 35th year that we've received the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And you had a similar presentation recently for the budget. And so this effort is equal to that and is quite an undertaking each year to meet those guidelines and criteria for best practices. We've also acquired over 165 residential and commercial properties this year for various transportation, water, and parks projects throughout the city. And we've received $120,000 in rebate revenue related to our electronic vendor payment and purchasing card program. Next year, we will continue to acquire properties as needed for the completion of various city projects. We plan to make additional improvements to the parking garage at 18th and I Street, including increased public access at the I Street entrance, additional video surveillance system, and we're also upgrading the elevator. We continue to look for ways to improve and automate our operations in the Finance Department to both increase efficiency and reduce the risk of fraud. And we will continue planning for the financing of the trip program and other department financings as needed. The Finance Department budget is found in the middle column there under Proposed Budget for 1718. Our proposed budget is $3,696,000, which is a $339,000 decrease compared to last year, or 8.4% reduction. The General Fund portion of that budget is actually going up 1.89%, or $55,000, and this is due to increased benefit cost of PERS. But again, overall, we are reducing the budget by $339,000. Couple of citywide discussion items, PERS Retirement Cost and Retire Medical Subsidy Program. The PERS actuarial information runs a little bit behind, so the most current information we have is for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015. Those PERS reports showed our unfunded liability at a little over $348 million. And so we are about 70% funded in our programs. This bar graph shows back in 2008, prior to the market decline, we were a little over 87% funded. When they had the big market decline in 2008 and '09, we dropped down to about 60% funding, and we've worked our way back up to right about 70% funding on the program. As we've had discussions previously, we expect our PERS cost to continue to escalate over the next several years. With the lowering of the discount rate from 7.5% to 7, this is what our projected... With the lowering of the discount rate from 7.5% to 7, this is what our projected costs look like going forward. Not quite double, but it's going to be very expensive. These are the costs per program. So in the PERS plan, we have three separate plans, one for police, one for fire, and one for everybody else, or we call it miscellaneous group. These are the actual costs per each plan for the fiscal years, historically and projected forward. And this is the average cost per employee of each of those groups. So the blue is police, the red is fire, and the purple is miscellaneous. Separate and distinct from the PERS Retirement Program, we have a Retire Medical Subsidy Program, where the city subsidizes medical premiums for retirees based on two criteria, 3% for years of service, and there's also a 42% subsidy for the PPO premium. This program was closed to new employees in 2006, so it only applies to employees who have been here prior to that date or hired prior to that date. The 42% subsidy was actually closed in 1996 for miscellaneous employees and 1998 for police and fire. So only people hired prior to those dates are eligible for that benefit. There are currently about 700 retirees receiving the benefit and about 800 active employees that may be eligible for the subsidy upon their retirement. They have to be with the city at least 15 years and be hired prior to those dates listed above. The -- we have a trust funds that we've been depositing money into for several years to fund this long-term liability. We currently have close to $60 million in the trust fund. The total liability is about $131 million, so we're just a little bit under 50% funded right now. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Nelson. I'm just excited about the parking garage and the new signs and that we're changing that over. That's always been confusing, I think, a little bit since we did it, but we wanted to be a little more economical in the beginning. So there's a -- I know we used to have to fund the parking garage. Is it self-sustainable yet on the -- or where are we at on that?
There is no general fund subsidy this year or plan for next year, so it is able to sustain itself.
Great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan?
You know, I just appreciate the fact that through the years, the good times and the very lean budget times, we have just continued to be determined to put money away for these different necessary expenditures. So I applaud you and our staff for that direction. And, you know, that is what has kept us, as healthy as we are, the money somehow is there just because it's planned ahead and you continue to do that. So thanks for your hard work, your ingenious, magical results that you keep coming up with. So thanks.
Thank you. The City Council's been very supportive in our efforts to do that.
Of course, of course, we're very supportive of your efforts. Deserved and we should be, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Our next presentation is from the Police Department.
Well, it takes the whole team. Welcome, Chief.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Lyle Martin, Bakersfield Police Chief. I'll be accompanied by Assistant Chief Evan Domestehos and Assistant Chief Greg Terry. This is our opportunity to highlight some of the 16, 17 accomplishments of the Bakersfield Police Department and present the budgets for the 1718 proposal. First, this is the organizational chart of the Police Department. We have four divisions, Support Services, Investigations, Operations, and the Administration Division. I would like to highlight that this year, we added a second Assistant Chief. So I'd like to thank the City Manager's Office for working with us through that process and the council for supporting that. And later on, you'll get to hear from both of those Assistant Chiefs, where I've made an effort to tell them every day that obviously I was twice the Assistant Chief that they Also, they'll be assisting me in this process as I have the rest of the staff here as well going forward with our efficiency and succession planning process. Our proposed budget, you'll see that there is a overall increase of 0.63%. This includes grant funding. Administration is up slightly with the addition of the second Assistant Chief. Operations is up slightly. And Animal Control, as a result of the rising cost in services, which is not far out of what we needed to look at. Proposed budget resources, the general fund itself is up 0.67%. I do need to highlight the relationship with community development in regards to the three police officers, which I will address in a later slide. So a part of that appropriation or that proposed budget will be addressed by Ms. Kitchen and her staff. The Traffic Safety is down 3.71%. That is a result of the City Attorney's Office working with our office to reduce the cost to our Red Flex, the red light camera project, where the City Attorney's Office was able to renegotiate our contract with them, thus lowering our proposed appropriations. SLESF up slightly this year for a proposed budget of $89 million. Pending grants, our Office of Traffic Safety, we have a $465,000 pending grant to address many of the issues that we have up there. Our DUI enforcement team continues to work tirelessly with our DUI checkpoints, our distracted driving. Prior to coming over here, we had 12 students from South High School in the basement that were going through our Driving While Intexticated program and looking at other issues and things throughout the city where they can help us, overtime, equipment, and bicycle and pedestrian safety. Alcohol beverage control, which is a huge undertaking for us, decoy stings, shoulder taps, as we've all seen in the news recently, the issue with spice and those types of things are the types of things that we can utilize our shoulder tap and those types of operations to try to affect those things. And our Project Safe Neighborhoods, $400,000 for the Shot Spotter Pilot Project. That application has been submitted. We continue to work tirelessly in an effort to address all of the council goals. We will highlight a few of these in the next few slides regarding response times, reduction in gang violence, our community policing efforts, Neighborhood Watch, and addressing Part One and Quality of Life Crimes. Department complement. As you can see, for 1718, we're looking at actually increasing the department's complement, which is currently 404. We're going to go to 407, which would be the three officers that Ms. Kitchen and her staff worked with our staff tirelessly with the City Manager's Office and with your blessing to get those three officers who can address issues in Ward One and Ward Two. So I'm very appreciative for that support. We have 148 civilian staff. We have a few vacancies. You'll see 30 sworn vacancies, which Chief Terry will address here shortly. And with that, I'm going to turn over part of this presentation to Assistant Chief Domestehos.
Thank you, Chief. Honorable Mayor, City Council. Just to address a few things, our citywide response times continue to reduce. As you can see, 2015, we were at 5 minutes and 34 seconds. 2016, we reduced to 5 minutes and 17 seconds. A lot of this is in part to the placement of officers in the communication center where they're able to answer calls and handle calls for service by telephone. The telephonic reporting unit, which is handling approximately 800 calls and reports per month, and the internet reports and the ability to take reports online and the different methods we've implemented. West Side, there's some capital projects that are in progress. The first one is the expansion of the West Side Police Department parking lot. This will be expanded to the north in the grassy knoll there. We anticipate a net increase of about 63 spaces, 35 of those going toward the -- for the Police Department and the daily operations, and about 23, 25 going for the public. This will significantly impact our daily operations and allow better use out of the West Side Police Department. An additional capital project, as you guys know, is the Pistol Range, sitting there in the middle of the city where shots are being fired all day long. The Pistol Range remodel will improve the safety. It'll prevent ricochets from the officers firing their weapons. It'll also reduce noise to the downtown area and help increase the -- improve the quality of life for the residents downtown. Coming in 201718, we got several things going on. We have our five-year strategic plan. We are currently, we've put together a steering committee with internal and external stakeholders. Here, we'll get input from different people in the community internally in the city and see what the community's after, what kind of police department are they looking for, what the expectations are. We will combine our strategic plan meetings with our citywide community meetings, where we'll seek input, we'll conduct surveys, and we'll use a variety of methods to get honest feedback and get, you know, good feedback so we can move in the right direction. In addition to this, we'll continue our training. We currently have de-escalation training, implicit bias training, force options, and crisis intervention training. All of these play into reducing liability, reducing our workers' comp, and helping officers, providing them with additional tools to deal with the public and have positive contacts and positive outcomes. Department Safety Risk Management Team, Chief is putting together a Department Safety Risk Management Team, which will work with the city risk. The purpose of this is to look at what we're doing, what liability is out there, how can we improve, you know, like backing a common accident for officers is backing accidents. So we've implemented first move forward where officers are backing into parking stalls and so their first move is forward, looking at ways to reduce accidents, reduce our workers' comp, and reduce our liability. Operations Efficiency Project, that's in the works. We're looking at our processes internally, looking at how to become more efficient, how to do things better, provide a better service to the community. And with that, we go into Animal Control. So, you know, through the proactive efforts in the field, partnering with the Bakersfield Homeless Shelter, partnering with SPCA, CBAC, we continue to increase our live release rates. As you can see, year over year, we started at 29% and we're up to about 64% in our live release rates. So we've made some excellent improvements there through these partnerships. I'll turn it over now to Assistant Chief Greg Terry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. First slide I'll go over is to look at crime citywide last year and 2015. This reflects the Part One crimes. These are seven different crime types that are reported to the federal government on a monthly basis and annually. There was a 9% overall increase in Part One crimes citywide in 2016 versus 2015. There were 10 more homicides committed last year than the year before. However, we did see a reduction in the number of sexual assaults and robberies last year. And help is on the way. We currently have 30 vacancies effective today. On Monday, May 22nd, 19 police trainees will begin their orientation process with, on May 30th, Tuesday, May 30th, they will begin the actual academy. This will leave 11 vacancies that we are hopeful to be able to fill through a lateral or academy graduate recruitment later this year. If we are unable to do that, we are prepared to run a second police academy. And the resources for the second academy, if it's necessary, are included in this year's Part of our efforts, strong efforts, to reduce crime in our community is Crime Prevention and Community Relations Programs. This is just an example of approximately 20 different programs that are run out of the Police Department. As you can see, there's a wide variety of them, covering virtually all age groups. This is an example of departmental events that are held throughout our community every year. These are critical to our ability to develop relationships and strengthen our partnerships with businesses and community organizations, all in efforts to reduce crime. This graph reflects two different things. The first thing I'd like to bring your attention to is the red line there, which is a -- showed a steady increase. This is, reflects the actual number of Neighborhood Watch groups that are active throughout our city. And as you can see, last year, we reached over 1,000 active Neighborhood Watch groups throughout the community. The blue line reflects the number of presentations, both Crime Prevention and Community Relations Programs, that were presented out in the community last year. As you can see, there was almost a doubling in, due to the efforts to be intentional about outreach and community education and building partnerships with our community. With the doubling of the number of presentations, we reached almost double the number of citizens that we were able to share and educate by reaching, by virtue of the department events and the different community relations programs that we presented. And obviously, we continue, we will look forward to continuing this outreach and efforts to strengthen our partnerships, both with the businesses and our different community partners in order to have a safer community. And then I will turn it back over to Chief Martin for the last two slides.
Thank you, Chief. As you can see, our outreach efforts, we have 37 likes on our Facebook page. We've gone above and beyond to try to get out there and get the word out on the things that we're doing out in the community. We're on Next Door now, which was spearheaded by the City Manager's Office and Councilmember Parlier, and our staff is out there. And as you can see from some of the feedback, that it is being a very positive reflection on your Police Department. And finally, the community outreach efforts from your Bakersfield Police Department is not just local. You can see we've been recognized on both the national and world stage for our beeping Easter egg hunt for, designed for the visually impaired children. The other thing I would like to point out is, on our grant, we were, had a site visit from the COPS office, where they looked at our grant from 2011 to 2015, which this council approved for our hiring of veterans. Upon their review of the application, the actual grant administration, and the financial reports, they have taken our model and they're going to use it as the national model for anyone who is applying for COPS grants. So we're working well with our federal and state partners, and we're being fiscally responsible with the monies that this council has afforded us to go out and protect the public. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Chief, you've really been the right man in the right time to take leadership of the department. I just want to congratulate you on your tenure and leadership of the department. Now, let me ask you a question. Were you the longest-serving assistant with the department?
I think so.
Yeah? Well, I want to just congratulate you and the City Manager's Office, too, for their foresight in bifurcating the Assistant Chief's position-- foresight in bifurcating the Assistant Chief's positions. I think that gives you the availability to get out of the weeds a little bit, to administrate the department the way you need to, and I think you selected two very able assistants, so good job on that. I was really impressed on the response times. When I came to the council, I think response times were over twelve minutes for Priority One calls, and big accolades really go to Councilmember Weir for the IACP recommendation on that. You know, we use that as kind of a template to get where we're at now, but I think the department has not only used that, but picked up their own tools along the way and gone way beyond that initial report. On response times, too, I want to give a little shout-out to Councilman Rivera himself, and I worked very hard on getting the South Substation open, and I want to thank the City Manager and you for that also. And if you could give a, just a little information, on Thursday, I was on the radio on Scott Cox's show this morning, talking about National Police Week and your memorial ceremony Thursday morning. Could you give a little information on that, please?
Absolutely. As you can see, I'm wearing my pin here for National Police Week, where we recognize those officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice. So, the department, on Thursday at seven a.m., we will have our local ceremony out front of the police building, and at noon, the Bakersfield Police Department, we are the host of the county-wide memorial. So, at noon on Thursday, we'll be out in front of the Liberty Bell, again, recognizing those officers who've made the ultimate sacrifice. So, you are all invited, and we would appreciate your attendance.
Thank you again, Chief.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to also compliment the police department on the efficient use of resources and the, and the response times coming down. You mentioned twelve minutes, I think fifteen minutes plus when I got on, so definitely moving in the right direction, I appreciate that. The, I would ask that, when you, when you show graphs on these violent crimes and property crimes, just year over year, there's, I'd like to see long-term trends, whether it's a ten-year or twenty-year. Sometimes there's abnormalities in, you know, what happened last year versus this year, and I know, you know, the direct year-over-year is important, but also where we at in the long-term trend is helpful, so I would appreciate that.
We'll take care of that.
And the, the community relations and outreach, you know, doubling in one year is just fantastic. I think that's just really important for the police department, to have that interaction with the community, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I have seen your team out everywhere in the community. Thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Our next presentation is from the Fire Department.
Welcome, Chief. Delicious crab fest.
Wasn't that fantastic?
Shrimp was excellent. I think we all enjoyed it. And a great event.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Smith, Council Doug Greener, Fire Chief, Bakersfield Fire Department. It's a pleasure to be before you this afternoon to discuss the Fire Department's proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18. As always, we'll provide a budgetary overview of the Fire Department's three main branches that include Fire Suppression Services, Fire Administrative Services, and Fire Safety Services. You'll note, under our expanded organization, that there are many divisions and units assigned to each of those three branches. The Fire Department's proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18 is thirty-eight million nine hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. The bulk of that is proposed to be budgeted to emergency response under the Fire Suppression Branch. The Fire Department's proposed operating budget for 1718 is four-point-one million. Again, the bulk of that budgeted under Fire Suppression. You can see by this Fire Department division-level breakdown that the majority of divisions will see increases in 1718. That's due to nondiscretionary cost increases in PERS benefits and some internal costs as well related to fleet services. That increase represents a three-point-two-eight percent increase over the previous year, and again, the bulk of our proposed budget goes to emergency responses under the Fire Suppression Branch. We'd like to offer the council some comparative budget perspective. We begin with a local agency comparison. You can see on the left Kern County's budget, annual budget, one hundred and forty million dollars versus the BFD at thirty-eight-point-nine million. On the right is a comparison of responses or activity. The county at just over fifty thousand responses annually versus the BFD's thirty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-seven responses. And again, your Fire Department is a Class II organization as well. Moving on to a comparison of the nine comparable jurisdictions as approved by an earlier council resolution, we see again on the left a budgetary comparison, the average of those nine comparables at forty-four-point-eight million versus the BFD at thirty-eight-point-nine million. And on the right, the activity comparison, the average of the nine comparables at twenty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-one responses a year versus the BFD at thirty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-seven. And the Bakersfield Fire Department, in terms of just being on the list of the nine comparables, we would fall in at number eight in terms of budget, at thirty-eight-point-nine million proposed, and you can see those that are above us and those two that are below us. Similar comparison here in terms of activity or response numbers, the BFD is at number three, again, over thirty-six thousand annual responses, two of the nine comparables above us and the bulk of those below us. And we present this very simple data as, I think, a visual of the value in your city Fire Department and the value of the, the model that we maintain. Moving into a budget overview of the Administrative Services Branch, the Fire Department is engaged in ongoing planning. We have numerous task forces deployed throughout the year that are engaged in disaster-level planning, department operations planning, state master mutual aid response planning, and emergency medical services planning, just to name a few. This is a list of some of the major incidents the BFD was assigned to throughout the state during last wildland fire season. This includes the Chimney Fire, where the Bakersfield Fire Department was assigned to assist in the protection of Hearst Castle at San Simeon. So, active and statewide OES mutual aid. Again, as I noted earlier, the department's involved in disaster planning throughout the year, and our action plan for 1718 is to maintain our NIMS and SEMS compliance, which is related to the City of Bakersfield's eligibility to receive federal funding in the event of a local disaster, so that's very important, as well as engaging in ongoing EOC and DOC planning and training processes. The Fire Department pursues grant funding every year. This year, the State Homeland Security Grant Program is funding thermal imaging cameras, that's the unit, the photo there on the right. These devices are used by firefighters to find hidden fire and also find down or trapped victims, a very important tool. The photo on the left is a ruggedized computer tablet. Those will be carried on our resources in response to a statewide mandate for emergency medical services reporting, sort of a wireless download process to both Kern County EMS and the state. So, a couple of important grant-funded programs. The Fire Department also utilizes some unique and creative staffing models to augment our firefighting force, and one of those is the BFD Reserve Firefighter Program. This is a core of men and women that are trained to a level that essentially allows us to use them as the fourth firefighter on some of our resources. Our specific fire engines, it targeted fire stations, very valuable program, a very dedicated group of men and women. We also utilize the BFD Fire Explorer Program. Now, this is a, a group of younger men and women with more limited responsibilities, but nonetheless, very helpful for us. We use them to support logistics and some community service support as well. And one of the real values here is that we are exposing young people to career in the fire service. The Fire Department's always involved, thanks in part to the City Manager's Office with capital improvements. A couple of recently completed projects here that I'll discuss in more detail in a minute, but for 1718, the Fire Department's proposing a major restroom facility rehabilitation at Fire Station Number Two. That's located on East Twenty-first Street. It's been in service since nineteen-hundred, our oldest fire facility. It has a restroom that's about thirty, thirty-five years old and in need of some attention. We also plan to pursue some water conservation efforts at the Central Fire Station Fire Department Headquarters complex. Not necessarily a capital improvement project, but we want to remove some water-heavy landscaping, dead trees, and really, I think, make the perimeter of that rather large facility obviously more water-friendly and just less work for the crews. So, we talked about some recently completed capital improvement projects. This is Fire Station Four, which was, again, a major restroom facility rehabilitation. You know, we had a sixty-plus-year-old, basically restroom, galvanized pipes. We had damaged walls and ceilings. So, this, obviously, commercial-grade rehabilitation here that is going to serve that facility for, at a minimum, another thirty or forty years. A well-done project that I think really well-spent taxpayer dollars. Now, Fire Station Eight. Fire Station Eight is probably the largest capital improvement project we've been involved in in recent history, major facility rehabilitation. The great news about this, although it's been going on for over a year now, the great news is, is that firefighters are going to move back into this facility from the temporary facility located on Panorama tomorrow, which is great news. And you can see this exterior shot of the rehabilitated front facade. Some additional exterior shots here, just showing the quality of the rehabilitation. I spent a bit of time at Fire Station Eight over my career. You would not recognize this facility if you had been in it when it was pre-rehab. It is really a fantastic project. And again, you can see by these interior photos that it's a commercial-grade restoration that is going to make this heavily-used facility viable for another fifty or sixty years. It's well-done, well-laid out and well-done. In terms of large equipment, in sixteen-seventeen, the Fire Department replaced Fire Engine Nine, that is in service. Brush Patrol Twenty-four and Fire Engine Eleven are currently in process and close to delivery. And for seventeen-eighteen, the Fire Department proposes replacing Light Fire Engine Three-Zero-One and Light Fire Engine Three-Zero-Five. These are shorter wheel-based, smaller versions of a standard fire engine, very useful and valuable in fighting vegetation fires, wildland fires in the urban interface, and they see heavy use in the core, urban core of Bakersfield, too. We have areas that are difficult for fire equipment to access, very helpful resources. Our Community Services Office, as always, has been proactively engaged in public safety education and public information. Over three hundred public education community events coordinated through that office every year. That represents thousands and thousands of individual Fire Department firefighter and public contacts. And of course, the action plan for seventeen-eighteen is to continue that. The BFD Nine-Eleven World Trade Center Memorial Project has received great community feedback, very positive feedback, significant attendance continuing. We were a little bit surprised by that. The BFD nonprofits have been working with community donors and have added a Survivor Tree component to the site. The Survivor Tree is a sapling grown, grown from the seed of the original Survivor Tree at Ground Zero, that's now part of the Nine-Eleven Memorial in Lower Manhattan. Moving on to an overview of the Fire Safety Services Branch, you can see the Fire Prevention Division was very busy in 2016, conducting over fifty-six hundred fire safety inspections. The action plan for seventeen-eighteen is for the Fire Prevention Division to continue its focus on inspections of high and at-risk occupancies, and obviously, reduce the number of fires associated with those occupancies, as well as conducting inspections of more than six hundred and fifty oil wells in the city. In terms of emergency communications, a big part of our response model, the action plan for seventeen-eighteen is to continue our computer-aided dispatch upgrades and fine-tuning, and the Fire Department also forecasts that we'll need to hire and train new fire dispatchers next year. Fire Station, you know, the Fire Department's a facilities-heavy organization, and fire station maintenance is always high on our priority list. Again, our action plan in seventeen-eighteen is to continue to focus on that day-to-day facilities maintenance, as well as focus on deferred maintenance issues. Those are much fewer now that we've been working on capital improvement, but we'd like to stay on top of that so that our capital, some of our capital improvement projects aren't so major in the future. Now, I'd like to ask Deputy Fire Chief of Operations Tyler Hartley to come up and offer the council and mayor a budgetary overview of the Fire Suppression Services Branch.
Thank you, Chief Greener, Honorable Mayor Go, councilmembers, Mr. Tandy. I will be presenting some data regarding our responses. First off, in 2016, you can see a total breakdown of over thirty-six thousand responses for the Bakersfield Fire Department. Fire and explosion responses, just over two thousand. Emergency medical responses, close to twenty thousand during that year. Technical and heavy rescue responses, approximately two thousand. Hazardous conditions, about, close to seven hundred, and then alarms, investigations, and other, over ten thousand, with public service responses at one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. This is a two-point-six percent increase over the previous year, which is a pretty typical trend for the Bakersfield Fire Department. As you can see here, over the last five years, total responses in 2012 were just under thirty thousand, and now in 2016, we are pressing close to thirty-seven thousand calls for service on the year, which is an increase of almost seven thousand calls per year when compared to 2012. Fire responses have a predictable trend lined. Now, in 2016, two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven calls related to fire responses. EMS responses, similar trend. In 2012, sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven, and now in 2016, twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine EMS-related responses, with an increase of close to five thousand when compared to 2012. We also have response time data that we have been collecting with the department. As you can see, there are a variety of call types indicated here for fires, explosions, hazardous- hazardous conditions, public service responses. And our goal for the department is to be on scene within 6 minutes and 59 seconds 90% of the time. As you can see, we do pretty well here, and these response times do include Code Two responses, which are no lights, no sirens, which do take a little more time than when we're going Code Three. As you may be well aware, a critical factor in our effectiveness is the ability to get firefighters and equipment to the scene of an emergency in a timely manner. Our response times here are divided into two broad components. They include mobilization time and travel time. Mobilization time includes the initial 911 call to the public service answering point or the PSAP, which is often law enforcement. That call is then transferred to our fire dispatch, the alarm processing time at fire dispatch, and then the notification of the alarm to the fire station, and then lastly, the time it takes for our firefighters to get that apparatus rolling out of the fire station. That is our mobilization time. Our travel time is obviously the time from the station to being on scene. Our goal for travel time is four minutes, and our goal for that mobilization time is two to three minutes, which meets our six minutes and 59 seconds 90% of the time. During the year of 2016, we experienced one civilian fire death in November. We also experienced 11 civilian fire injuries during that year. Our property loss equated to almost $9 million that year, but property saved or property that was threatened adjacent to those fires equated to $38 million, almost $39 million, which is a pretty significant save for the fire department. Our trend line for our arson division actually dropped a little bit in 2016, and we analyzed that drop thoroughly. And we have had, one of our arson investigators was injured this year. He was on industrial leave for about two months. That affected our ability to investigate with the arson division a few of those fires, although if you pay attention to the previous trend line, we had almost an extra 200 fires this year compared to the year prior. A lot of those fires were investigated by engine companies and supplemented by the arson division, so that is what we attribute the slight drop in investigations from our arson division. Our training division has been extremely active for several years now. Our accomplishments for fiscal year 1617 included the graduation of a fire academy, several promotional exams, fire engineer, fire captain, which keeps us busy throughout the year, and then individual training hours equated to almost 80,000 or at 80,000 training hours, including many mandates. Our action plan for fiscal year 1718 includes another academy due to attrition, and of course, maintaining our relationship and maintaining our facility at the Olive Drive Fire Training Facility. With that, I'd like to turn this back to Fire Chief Doug Greener. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Finally, just a brief word on fire department staffing. You can see the fire department's traffic, five-year staffing trend line relatively flat. Again, this year, remaining unchanged, 199 full-time positions proposed for 1718. However, the fire department will be conducting another firefighter training recruit academy. BFD Fire Academy 2017 II is scheduled to begin in the fall of 2017 with approximately 15 to 20 new members. And these new hires will be filling current and projected vacancies, vacancies that have occurred due to retirement or terminations. These are not new positions. These are existing approved positions that we're filling with the academy. And if I could just take a brief moment to really thank everyone, all the men and women with the Bakersfield Fire Department, whether they're supporting the fire department's mission or whether they are sworn members actively responding to a multitude and wide variety of emergencies and really risking their life every day. Of course, we respond to many different types of fires throughout the year, but they also respond to technical rescues, heavy rescues, swift water rescues, which are turning out to be a little bit of an issue for us this year, hazardous materials calls, and a broad spectrum of other public service and community-related requests for service. So very, very proud of them. So thanks to them. And thank you, Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Smith, and the council for your continued support. Thank you to the City Manager's Office and the city staff for their support. Thanks to the city budget team and the fire department budget team for the work this year. Greatly appreciated, and I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments from council. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, for a safety department, I think your department does more with less than probably any other fire department in the state, and I just want to congratulate you and your team and your department for all your efforts in protecting our city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. In a couple of areas, without drilling down too deep on it, I do think, especially in some administrative areas, that you are short over there in that department, and I hope that at some point, you know, we find the dollars to be able to help you out over there and shore up some of those responsibilities that I feel are needed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
With, you may not have the statistical information on it yet, but with the opioid and spice call responses, do you have anything? You guys have been just going crazy with this stuff here lately, aren't you?
Yes, Mayor Go, councilmember Parlier, it's interesting. We had a discussion at the staff meeting this morning. I believe Engine Company Two, again, located on East 21st Street, ran seven spice-related calls in one day over the weekend. Was that Sunday, Chief? Yeah. So seven of those, and we did recently initiate a Narcan program for all of our fire engines, and we had a Narcan save over the weekend as well, too. Older gentleman had overdosed on prescription medication. So we're seeing a lot of activity out there, drug-related. So it impacts our responses as well.
Are you thinking, and this is off-budget a little bit, but are you thinking about any PSA's or anything regarding the kind of the health crisis that's going on in our community with this?
Mayor Go, councilmember Parlier, we can certainly look at that. In fact, we're engaged in several PSA programs right now, one for fireworks and one for river rescues, but that certainly would be within our realm to maybe try and get the word out, and we can do some social media work as well. So I'll make that suggestion to community services and see what we can do.
And the reason I ask, on the way to your crab feed on Saturday at White Land in Gosford, I passed the two people that overdosed, and so it really brought it to the forefront. My last really thank you is for the rollout and administration of the new administrative process for the firework enforcement. That was very successful, and I just want to thank you and your team for that, too.
Well, thank you, sir, for your concern and your work on that. It was a very pleasant surprise at how effective the administrative citation process ended up being for the department. I think it's going to be excellent going forward. We're looking forward to this year being an effective process as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just always appreciate the fire department and the work you do, Chief, and I just wanted to reiterate the 9/11 memorial. I live out by it and go by it almost daily, and like you said, I do see a lot of people there also, and I think it's a great service to the community for us to remember always where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you mentioning PSA. I've had a thought for some time, and I'm not sure, perhaps it would be a combination of our police department and our fire department, but the number of pedestrian accidents that we have, there needs to be a PSA on that. You know, it's not always the driver's fault. We need to just make very clear how pedestrians can keep themselves safe. And I've wondered also, the number of people that use bicycling as a mode of transportation at night, perhaps we would be able to give away the reflective vests, you know, the bicycle, but also the people that walk to work or walk home from work after dark. But, you know, it's just a shame. People take chances. I know, actually, two times in the last year, I have just thanked God, but I have realized how careless our pedestrian traffic has become, and I could have had a life-changing, forever tragic accident. And just people running across the street. There was one time out on Brim Hall, I wondered if they were actually just purposely trying to terrorize the driver because I, there was no way to see them at dark, at night, no way to see them until they were just getting out of the way of my vehicle when my lights just hit them. But then, just several weeks ago, there were three people walking just almost out in the middle of the street. They were just walking, and I didn't see them until they were just, until my lights hit them. So anyway, we just need to put the responsibility on the pedestrian as much as possible because, and the reflective vests, they do a great job. So anyway, I'm glad I'm having an opportunity to mention this because it's a real problem. We're hearing more and more of that type of accident and tragedy all the time, and it's everyone's responsibility to just help this not happen.
Yes, Mayor, councilmember Sullivan, you're exactly correct, and I'm sure the PD has detailed statistics on the number of pedestrian-related accidents, but what we've noted is, of course, we respond to those as well, too, but what we've noted, particularly around Fire Department Headquarters, is a increasing blatant disregard for traffic laws.
Yes.
And pedestrian rules. People continually walking out of the crosswalks, riding bikes, you know, on the opposite wrong side of the street, crossing very busy intersections on a diagonal. So it's a big problem, and we have to be very careful downtown as well, too, because there's a lot of foot traffic. So it's an issue.
Yeah, exactly. You say disregard, disrespect. Sadly enough, those words are just more and more a problem. And, you know, they always, when it's being reported on the news, it's always a matter of wondering if there are drugs or alcohol involved. Many times, it's that of the pedestrian. So not just only the driver, but the pedestrians that cause their problems.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and your team. I want to echo the gratitude of my colleagues. Just a question about the number of responses. We're eighth in budget and third in comparable jurisdictions in responses. Is there anything that would skew those numbers? Are you able to disaggregate the information from the other jurisdictions? I notice we're very high in emergency medical responses in relationship to the total responses and alarms and investigations. Do we, as a community, tend to use those services more for some reason?
That's a great question. The data that we receive comes directly from the fire department, so, you know, we ask them, that's a very specific question. So it's an apples and apples to comparison. And our medical, the number of EMS or medical responses as a percentage of our overall response number is actually fairly low for a fire department. Many departments report 80, 85% EMS-related calls, and we're trending at about 55, 60% So I think we're certainly within a respectable range comparatively speaking, but there is a lot of need out there. There are a lot of folks that, I think, rely on public services, and they're using them more. Why they're using them more, I really can't tell you, but they are.
Well, thank you for your outstanding job and your dedication and just making a difference in our community. We really need you, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Adjournment?
I would move to adjourn.
We are adjourned at 1:30. Thank you, everyone.